I'd like to call the meeting order for August 2nd, 2023. We'll start with a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrant bells off. Yes. Good, good. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion when we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion when we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Town and Minister Weekly Update.
Okay, first is the monthly update from the Sheriff's Department, their notable events. First, they want to let you know that they scheduled some proactive traffic details on some roads in Acton, Acton Ridge, H Road 109, Fox's Ridge, and in Shapley, Ross Corner, Shapley Corner Road and Route 11. They got a grant for some additional detail, so that's assisting in helping keep the roads safe. On July 2nd, there was a domestic disturbance on Back Road in Shapley. Also on July 2nd was a resident that was suicidal on Mason Road. They were able to get him to the hospital safely. July 5th, there was a warrant for an individual from Shapley for violation of condition of release and witness tampering, and they weren't able to get him. July 6th, they investigated a reported trespass at a camp on East Shore Drive. Someone, it looks like in the early mornings, they were on the property and they were trying to get into the home. The Sheriff's Department was able to summon her for trespassing and warn her not to return. July 9th, a resident on West Shore Drive reported a suspicious vehicle at the address. Says that a woman exited the vehicle and went looking around a parked boat. They said that the neighbor, she indicated to the neighbor that they, she was looking for something that was lost. Eventually, the police got there and they identified a woman from Sanford as a suspect. On July 11th, deputies responded to a disturbance at Horn Pond Boat Launch in Acton. It is reported that a male and female appeared to be high on drugs and the male hit the female and flipped their canoe. Upon arrival, the deputies indicated that they were both New Hampshire residents and they both showed signs of opiate intoxication. Nine grams of meth were found. They were eventually taken into custody. July 12th, responded to a home on Peck Road for a disturbance. The property owner indicated that someone was hunting bears on his land. There was screaming, swearing going on. Eventually, it turned out to be a misunderstanding. No criminal conduct. On the 15th, Sheriff's Department received a 911 call from an Acton resident on Acton Ridge Road advising that a large group of motorcycles had arrived at her residence and that some operators were trying to force their way in. There was arrest for burglary and criminal threatening in that situation. July 16th, Deputy Samborn responded to a home on Totty Road for a deceased male. Nothing suspicious. Busy month. July 29th, deputies responded to a home in Shapley and attempted to arrest an individual for aggravated assaults. Back window was open and he left. I'm sorry, I need to black the names out ahead of time. July 29th, deputies collected what they believed to be an engagement ring. It was found by a citizen swimming at the foot of the lake in Shapley. The item was described with X stones in it and it's being secured at the Sheriff's Department. So if he lost it, contact them. Also, at the end of the month, this was actually just the other day, the Police Department of Massachusetts contacted the Sheriff's Department seeking assistance in locating a suicidal male. His phone had pinged in the area of Goose Pond Road. After several hours, they were able to locate him near the shooting pit across from Booney's. He was semi-alert and they were able to transport him to the hospital. That was July.
It's the longest one.
That's enough, yeah.
Yes, that was a busy month.
Lot of stuff happening.
So also regarding the Sheriff's Department, I did let them know that you were interested in reviewing the contract, even though it was going to be the same, and we wanted to see a budget. The city manager reached out to me today and said it would be about two weeks before he could get that to you, but they would start working on it.
Was Shapley, has it got one yet?
No, I would, no. It'd be the same one.
Okay.
I mean, she CC'd on the emails, so I'm assuming she hasn't.
Okay.
Next is just to let you know that I did the first round of interviews for the deputy clerk position. Actually, last evening narrowed it down to, I believe, were the top three candidates and have scheduled those three individuals for a second round on Friday. David, as the chair, will be joining me to do those. Road Committee reached out to me to let me know that there is a new chair on the committee. It is Jay Ward, and he also indicated that himself and another member, Cindy Hart, would be interested in meeting with the Sebago Tex regarding the road assessment. So that, we haven't scheduled that yet. Is there a time, Ed? Is, are we gonna, David, you mentioned as a chair attending that?
Yeah.
Is there a time that's better for you guys to try to?
I think we invited the chair to attend that meeting.
Just the chair?
Yeah.
Okay, so just the chair?
Yeah.
And the road commissioners?
Yeah, definitely.
Definitely, yeah.
All right, so I'll send an email, I guess, on that. So when, when do you want that meeting to be? I guess I need to get it scheduled so I can get started.
Nights or Fridays? Or Fridays?
Fridays or evenings?
I could, I could do a late afternoon, too.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
I'll make whatever work.
Yeah.
So.
Next is just to let you know that we've prepared a memo that will go out tomorrow regarding the town report and the deadline will be September 7th. So that gives everybody, department heads and committees, a solid month to put that together.
I'm sorry, what was that date again?
September 7th.
Okay.
And then last is a request for some vacation time and adjustment in my hours for the week of August 21st. Wednesday, I'm proposing that the office be open from 1:00 to 4:00. We have motor vehicle training that morning and a rental. So we're offering to open up in the afternoon after that. Thursday, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then Friday, we would have regular hours. So it's just a change Wednesday and Thursday.
Sounds good.
Okay, so you're just going to post that on the website?
Yes, sir.
Terrific.
Awesome.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Can I ask a question? There was an email from, and I'm blanking on the fellow's name, who's the chairman of the DAM Committee.
Roland Legere?
Yes. I've been trying to get an accounting of that money that is paid to Sanford. I've been, I've had numerous requests to them now.
Alex, right, you're emailing Alex?
At least three requests. I have yet to get an accounting. I'd like to know what money they're holding, whether they've spent everything or not. And if not, is that being factored into any requests for new funds?
Okay.
Would you, maybe that should come from either you or the selectmen, whatever can get their attention.
Yes, we'll send it to Alex and to the supervisor.
This should be a relatively simple thing. I'm not sure why it can't get done. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
That's all you got? Okay, department head, community chair updates. We have any tonight? I don't see any. Okay, liaison updates.
Met with the Forester this afternoon, just kind of talk about their role and the scope of what we're going to talk about later on tonight.
Okay, yep. I, I did some meetings with many people, people who want to be on the rec committee. And that went pretty well, so that'll be something we'll be discussing tonight, I'm sure, at some point.
Our first rollover of an investment is going to be made, I think, the 8th of August or sometime around that. So we're working with the treasurer to roll that money over.
Nice.
And actually, on that note, if I can, we did, Brad Moore did get back to us regarding the CD and the interest. He needed a little more time. He had never been asked that, so, and he was surprised there was no escrow agreement, so he is going to get back to us that David was actually there.
Regardless of what happens to the interest, we need an agreement.
Him and, he and Joe Lenkowski both agreed that it would be up to the planning board if they wanted to reconsider.
If we don't have an agreement, which is puzzling, but if we don't, David, you mentioned rather than holding funds, we just have them do a bond. Can we put that back to the planning board and ask them to take that matter up with the recommendation from us? That we convert it to a bond and release the funds?
Yes.
And it seems to me the bond should come from the property owner. Not, not the owner of the field. I mean, it's really, we want to make sure, just like we would for a pit. It would be the owner of the pit we would ask for a bond. Why wouldn't we ask for?
Well, that may get into changing the condition of the vote that happened to the planning board. I'm not sure we can go that far. I mean, we can, we can ask the planning board to reconsider the method. I mean,
I think that'd be a better route to go next time.
Yes.
But I think for right now, I think what we should be doing is just, at least get the same, same party, just get us a bond, I think, at this point in time.
To get out from under the CD, which is coming due in less than a week.
I'll be honest with you, I don't know that he can get one, because it's not, it's not their property. But maybe, maybe they can, but I would imagine the insurance carrier.
Well, you can, because I mean, I, I get bonds all the time. I go on other people's property and I do a job on it. I get, I get a bond.
So I guess the other thing is too, because I, I don't recall if it's the 8th or the 11th, but that CD is coming due. So we should probably at least, you know, put it into a regular account, because if it rolls over automatically, you're going to be, it's going to be, not going to mature until 2024.
What I suggest is we, and I can talk to Kelly, we can, the, the bank, the local bank in town has offered us a, an account that we are now using for town funds.
Right.
That provides daily liquidity, liquidity that gets four and a half percent.
Right.
So we should ask them to open up another account for this $90,000 to get that rate.
I just don't want it to roll over again, because then if the planning board votes, we're going to stop. Right.
There's not a lot to be gained from going to a CD at this point.
Okay, we'll take care of that. And that's all.
Okay, old business, transfer station trailers.
All right, so I spoke to Robin. He was working last week when we opened these and gave him the instruction of the board to go out and seek pictures of the local used ones. So I trust he's going to provide those to us now?
Well, I don't, I have them on my phone from one person, and I went tonight to Lebanon to get one that was in Lebanon.
Did you take pictures of them?
I did have pictures of them.
Do you want to just pass them around so they can look at them?
I can, yep.
Of the trailers, Robin.
I tried to get them printed off, so you all could have a copy of them, but.
Robin, are there any that look weathered?
Yes, I would, one of, this one here that's in Lebanon, you just scroll to the, to the left, too. I took all four sides and he took a picture when he picked them up in New Jersey. He took a picture of the underside of it. He couldn't send them to my phone, so that's why I don't have.
How much is that one?
Huh?
How much is that one?
He quoted 47 apiece. That's a used one. The new ones, only thing different with the new ones, that's, that's all, there's only like six pictures. With the new ones, they have grease fittings on the hinges of the doors.
What does that say?
So you can actually grease them. The one I just went to Lebanon that you're looking at right now and Brock's is in there, too.
Okay, that's a door open, I was trying to.
Yeah, the door is open. I took a picture of it.
Sure way.
It's two that color? Yes, there's two, he guaranteed, same color.
Same color?
Yeah.
So the Sherway ones are in Lebanon?
The other one is, I gotta go back in, into.
It seemed to me we had one bid at 45, right?
His has still got stuff in it, so we really had to get the pictures of the.
Is it an outside picture?
Yeah.
So Tom, what Robin explained to me, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to speak to Will about this, is that the $4,700 price that Sherway, do I understand that's going to be a recommendation as the better quality of the two?
Yes.
Okay, so Sherway at 47, that was a delivered price, but he was willing to drop it down to 45 if he didn't have to have a piece of equipment at the transfer station to unload them. So what Robin thought was that Will happens to be there at an upcoming date to do work anyways, and if for the same cost, he can pull them off.
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking, you know.
Assuming that doesn't cost us anything.
Work before we put them in the place anyway, so I, I was hoping that when he's there, I didn't even stop, spoke to Will.
I thought you did.
But.
He's learning a lot right now, right?
Yeah. It's really not much that needs to be done. Couple rocks and a couple, you know, kind of pushback is pretty much set in place.
How do you dispose of the old ones?
That's up to you guys.
Well, is there a cost of that?
I would imagine him crushing them up and putting in a container or however we want to do it. I don't know if we can put it over the road or not, or what.
Free for the taking? Nobody will take them?
Trailers, right?
One is a tractor trailer with still got axles under it. And the other one is just a 20-foot box trailer that's totally empty now. I had EPI come down and take the hazardous waste out of it.
Always have with the bill.
Are any ties on the one with the axles, or is it just act, okay?
Yep, there's ties on.
Selvish, don't you?
What I would do is I'd, I'd call Burwick, even Lambert's, and CIA, see if they'll come and take it away and pass the, take it away.
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't going to do anything until I got.
Yep.
Okay, well, you guys.
They'll have to disappear tomorrow, but you can at least get it here with.
What it's going to cost again. Okay, I can do that.
So Will, are you willing to take those off for no additional charge if they drop the price down to 45? Take them, what does he need to do with them?
He's going to be, he's going to be working doing all this stuff there anyway.
Well, I know, but we just want to make sure you'll take them off?
Well, yeah, we got it. Yeah. That's kind of what I was looking at, was trying to get him and, and the other guy, whoever we get the containers from, to coordinate it together, so when he's there, he just comes and drops them and he can put them in place.
Wasn't there someone else that had quoted 4,500, a local resident?
Yeah, Adam Brock.
Yes.
I showed David.
Those are the second set of photos.
That was the second photo, yeah. I don't think Tom saw that one, no.
Well, no, it, it, was the first one of the, looked like a better quality, did it?
Yes.
It did?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's really all I want to know, is what's your recommendation?
That's all.
Well, like I said, the, the new ones, only thing different with the new ones, well, they're one, one trick. Over and in, you know. Only thing different with them, they got grease fittings in, in their, in the hinges. So that's the only thing different.
That's a big deal, because I guess those are hard.
So what's the difference between these, what's the difference between these two at 40, both at 45 now?
One, the quality of the one I just went and looked at at Lebanon is, is it don't have so much rust on it. Actually, don't have no rust on it. Mr. Brock's has got surface rust, you know, there's nothing, no holes in it, but it's just surface rust. And I'd rather have two, because Brock's is the same color anyway, but, you know, I'd rather, you know, they, they don't have surface rust.
These ones you're looking at, they're, they're just, they look like new, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just went and looked at it and he guaranteed that he's gone to New Jersey today to get the other one. So he said it's basically the same thing, same color, same everything, you know, and he said he would take pictures of the, underneath of the one he's picking up in New Jersey today.
Wooden floors on them anyways, right?
Yep, it's got wooden floor, yep.
You can really get it flipped off anyways.
Right, yep.
Are they, are you going to have them up off the ground?
Yes, I'm going to put them on railroad ties and probably have a little bit of stone underneath it so the water will run through.
Yeah, as I learned by.
Right, yeah.
I learned the wrong way. You're not supposed to put the wooden ones right on the floor.
Right, right. So, yeah, they'll be up on, on railroad ties, plus there'll be stones underneath it.
If you put stone on it, because I put stone on your mind, if you put stone on it, the roads can't get in there.
Right, yeah, they don't like that.
They can't burrow through the stone.
Right, so that's, that's my recommendation that I, and I do have some railroad ties up there already that somebody dropped off, so I'll probably have to buy a few more, but that's it.
So he verbally told you he changed us from 47 to 45, deliver but not unloaded.
Right, if, if we had a piece of equipment there, $200, that $200 was him to bring his loader up every, you know, the, two times. So that was the extra $400 on top there.
Yep. Nice job, Robin, thank you.
Thank you. We need a motion to buy, so, what's the company? Oh.
I'm giving you this, I was just making a note at the bottom.
What about that, the old plastic compactor that we used to put plastic into?
Tom, with that steel compactor there that's sitting outside?
Yeah, that's sitting on the backside, yeah.
Is it absolutely unusable, right?
Absolute, wow, six years, five years ago, Bob had it looked at and it's going to cost about $3,000 to get the piston back into shape and because it's been unused for so long.
I think we discussed.
And it's got holes. I showed Tom, it's got holes in the top, as you can see right out through.
Would Atlantic Recycling give us anything for it?
I have no idea. I haven't, I haven't called anybody because I haven't got the okay to call anybody.
Contact them?
Well, I mean. We aren't recycling plastic now?
No.
And that's because the machine is broken?
No, because there's no, it's cost us more to get rid of it and it does that we, to do with it.
And our residents are still separating it?
Yeah, well, they're, they're bringing it in here into the recycling and we separate it in there because we don't want to tell everybody that we're not recycling it, because eventually.
Although you just did.
I know, but we're paying staff to walk over. Does it make sense?
I'd like to hear why, why you.
Why I don't want to tell everybody?
Yes.
Because eventually it might come back around till we do that, and once you stop.
I guess that's what I'm wondering is if, unless this is going to just deteriorate and get, continue to get worse.
Yeah.
For the same reason you just described, why wouldn't you just hang on to it if you're not getting, getting anything for it?
That's. Because we'll, we'll get money for, we'll probably get $2,000 or $3,000 for that piece of equipment.
Well, what's the cost of the? The replacement, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, no, to, for them.
What we got to look at here is before we decide to, you know, ship it or do whatever we're going to do with it.
Yeah.
We, you know, he does have a valid point, whether or not we do decide, you know, because I mean, I think there's probably a lot of people in town would pay the extra to recycle it just because of what.
I think they would, too, yeah.
Okay, it's whether or not the machine is able to be used. Now, the replacement cost of that machine is like stupid huge money and it's only going to cost a couple thousand dollars to fix the one we got.
Yeah.
Then we may just want to keep hold of that. If it's not a huge, huge cost to get a new one.
I bet that's.
Oh, I'm sure it is. Yeah, I'm sure it is.
There's no doubt.
So I think we.
Can we find out what it would cost to recycle plastic? If, with the plastic you're taking in, people are already bringing it in, sorting it, you're sorting, you're handling it. If we fixed the machine and that was serviceable, what would it cost us to recycle the plastic?
There's nobody that, in the Southern Maine that does it. The only place I heard of is Canada.
No other town is recycling plastic?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm doing one, in Rawlinsford, I'm doing plastic one through seven as a group. I'm not splitting it out at all.
See, we're only doing number two.
And it goes to be recycled. Not all of it is recyclable.
Yeah.
But that's up to whoever I sell it to.
So you're selling it?
Yes, but there's not a lot of money in it right now.
Well, it, it's more for the environment, as far as I'm concerned. You know, we got to keep the plastic out of the environment and I just would, if we can sell it, great. If there's a cost, I'd like to know what it is to get rid of it.
Yeah.
And dispose of it responsibly.
Even if it costs us a little bit, at least it's, it's a purpose.
That's right.
Your disposal, if you're disposing of it, it's trash. That's where it ends up.
Mm-hmm.
Whether, whether it goes in this container and goes to trash or this container.
Thank you, Ed.
If it only ends up in the trash, I think we should tell people that, so they don't separate it and try to handle it all. We, what, just let them know, plastic gets thrown in the trash.
Right, but the only, the only drawback from that, we get a lot of the plastic, we get returnables in with. So we sought the, the five centers, put them here and the other go across the street. So if we tell everybody, don't recycle plastic, we're not going to get that extra five cents from the stuff that do, we do get money from. That's the only question.
And what do we make on that?
Wow, last year I brought in $40,000.
In, in deposits?
In returnables, yeah. Yeah, right now, I think I added it up the other day, was almost 9800.
That's all aluminum cans, that's everything.
Aluminum cans and wine bottles and that sort of stuff and, and that sort of stuff, correct.
Water bottles.
Yeah, because it was in the town report. I had the treasurer put it in there. It was over $40,000 that we recycled last year. And I'm shooting for 60 this year between the meth, between the aluminum that I'm saving, the copper and the brass.
I, I think this, why don't, why don't you let me talk with Kelly and we'll find time when I'm in next. Robin, you can come in and we'll see if we can't figure out some way of, of laying out the economics around this, okay?
Okay.
And so we, we clearly understand what, what the implications are before we do anything.
But that other plastic that we used to do, like Tupperware and all that other stuff, there's nobody in the United States that does it. There's one place in Canada that's starting to do it and hopefully going to get into, into New England or United States, but right now, they're still, they're still in the, into the Canada.
So at this point in time, let's just hold off on the compactor right now until we figure out, that'll be another.
And get rid of the other two trailers that I want to get rid of.
We got to get rid of them, yeah, so see if you can contact those, at least those three that I just told you there.
Yeah.
They, they no doubt might even give us something, get rid of them.
Okay.
Maybe, if they take them for free, whatever.
He's going to come back before us, at least go through the liaison myself, tell us what, before you get rid of them.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks, Robin, so we.
And a motion.
On the container, make a motion that per the transfer station, what are you?
Superintendent.
Superintendent, there we go. Per his request and recommendation, we go with Sherway Incorporated for two containers. You're getting, what, the used ones?
Yeah.
Okay, two used 40-foot high cube containers, total cost, well, new cost is 4,500 apiece, delivered.
A second.
All in favor? Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, where are we here? District one, scope of work. Come on up, Will.
So this was in last week's packet. Do you have them? You want them to review, or?
I don't have them in front of me.
There you go, here it is. They were in last week. I asked them to come in tonight, even though we finished it last week, just to kind of update you.
So the first one was on Mason Road and Sam Page Road, right when you turn onto Mason Road. That kept washing out right in front of that house there, so we ended up ditching that all out and we ended up actually putting in a hot top swale right there, because the problem we were having was the water would shed so bad off the road, it was going through that little stone wall right there. And it was putting dirt right in that lady, lady's yard right there and we were going down there cleaning all the dirt out of her yard all the time. So we ended up putting a hot top swale in there from, it was like a little driveway apron. I think it was like 40, I think it was like almost 100 feet, and then we dropped it right in the culvert there. And then, and on her bottom driveway, we ended up, there's an old steel culvert right there. Well, all that rock, over the time, just all the rain we've been having, was plugging that bottom culvert up. Well, the water was going past the culvert, going in their yard and their leach fields around the left-hand sides. We ended up taking that driveway culvert right out. The lady was totally fine with it. And we cleaned that ditch all up, going down through there and everything, so we get that all set. And then the other one, I had to go down on Goose Pond Road, right at Mason Road. So we ditched from Mason Road right up almost to West Shore Drive. We had a bunch of driveway culverts that were plugged up and there was one that was getting pretty bad and I was nervous it was going to wash these people's new hot top driveway out, so we ditched that all out and everything last week. Got that taken care of.
So that's this year?
Yeah, the first one, there's one that's in Mason Road and the other one is Goose Pond Road.
Okay, now, do you have any other things for the future? These are already done, right?
Right, yeah, I'm going to do, I'm going to do a bunch this weekend. I'm going to give some to, I'm going to go like four or five. Next week, I'll give them to Jen and then I'll be all set for a little bit.
So I guess probably explain what's happened here is he wasn't able to show up last week. Typically, you guys presented to us, so I didn't realize this was a rush rush ever, so pretty much in the future, if you can get them to us earlier.
Right, yeah.
We don't want to, you know, do it after the fact, but we understand he had to do it.
What's the one you're doing this week?
Those are all done. We're, we're.
Did you say you're doing another one this week?
No, no, we did, we did everything, this, this week we started in the West Shore Drive on the Detour Road.
Yeah, he was actually hot topping last week during the meeting.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know how it is, it's, it's.
You were actually doing the hot topping?
Yeah, we do all of our own handwork, yeah.
Oh, your handwork, yeah, yeah.
I suggested to him that if he has an issue like that again, where he's got paperwork submitted, but he can't physically get here, fill me in on it as a liaison.
Yeah.
And I can present it.
Yep.
So, and that'll, but I said, don't.
Better yet.
Here's my exact words to him, that's on an emergency only. Don't make it happen.
Because, I mean, you must have projects coming up.
Yeah, right, I got them.
So get them to us next week. Adam gave us a list of all summer long, pretty much, so he doesn't have to worry about it. I don't really prefer that, myself.
No, I, no.
I'd rather have it like monthly or something like that. I don't prefer it at all, but if we're going to do it, I'd rather do it monthly. I'd rather have it like monthly, or something like that. I don't prefer it at all, but, uh, if we're gonna do it, I'd rather do it monthly.
And I don't prefer to be the, to be, to present it as a liaison, but, an emergency situation where he's out trying to finish something up that's time-sensitive.
Yeah, well, I mean, the only problem with you doing it is if we look at this, and we have an issue here, we, you can answer it.
I can't answer it, but, that kinda get.
So, you're crossing your fingers.
Yeah. But, it's all good. If I look at it ahead of time and can get him a phone, get him a phone call, so.
And there's our one.
Will, as you look forward, are there any, um, um, particular hot button issues that residents have brought to your attention that you don't think you'll be able to get to this year?
I don't, I don't, and there's nothing I'm unaware of, I don't.
Nothing, okay, so, anything that, uh, anyone has brought to your attention that they would like to see addressed, you'll be able to clear the decks on all of that?
The biggest thing I'm working on right now that is gonna be addressed is I have a, you probably saw it in my, uh, in my, uh, list of projects, so I'm gonna be doing a, that joint project with the York County Sewer Water up on the H Road. That's, that's kind of a time-sensitive situation, but, uh, that's the only, it's the only big thing I've heard from a resident, you know.
Does that include grading as well? I mean, all of the grading will be done, if there's anything to be done?
You don't have any grading to do, right?
No, no, I don't have no.
Okay, sorry, that's Adam.
No, no, but no, I've, I, I received a phone call today from a resident, I just had to go look at a, a driveway culvert with him on, uh, on Friday, but, no, it's.
A newer, new one, or?
No, he's got one now, that, I think he's gonna have his driveway hot topped at some point, and I think, they just, I think the contractor's gonna do it and whatnot, so I, he just wants me to take a look at it, that's all. And then, Jen sent me an email last week, I think regarding the grant for like Willow Street.
Yes.
So, a little backstory, so when they first started that was in twenty nineteen, is when they first got that three nineteen grant. Well, for us to be eligible to get the money, the project would've had to been done in twenty nineteen, even though I did all the work up there last year. Every, every year, they, that grant gets like a new amount of money, like sixty thousand dollars, where they pick specific projects. And if we were to get the money, I would've, we would've had to done the project in twenty nineteen, to be eligible for that project. Which I don't understand, cause I, I mean, we put the catch basins in, I think we made a drastic improvement there, but, um.
So, you don't believe we're eligible for any?
I know, the la, the lady that I deal with at York County Sewer, she was gonna do a little bit more digging, called me tomorrow, and, and maybe we could get a little bit for maybe like the catch basins or whatnot, just because we did have. You know, we did have quite an issue before, and, um, I showed her pictures and everything, and she was gonna try to see if she could do something, but, um, I'm just gonna wait to hear from her and see what she says next week.
Is that grant in the annual thing, and ongoing?
Uh, no, I think this year is the last, I think it was a five-year grant, and this year is the last bit of money they're gonna get, that's why I'm gonna do that project on the H Road with her.
So, yeah, do you wanna update them about that?
Oh, yeah, um, yeah, um, so, next week, you'll prob, you'll get a packet, there'll be like a, a construction agreement in there to do the project up there with them. So, the project's about fifteen thousand dollars, they're gonna cover half of it, so I think it's eight thousand they're gonna cover, and the town's gonna have to cover the rest of the project, so. And also, then we'll get eight thousand dollars back, in theory, once the project's complete.
I'm sorry, what's the project for?
Um, so up, right before the campground on the H Road, like where you drive down through, there's that pond on the left, and, uh, we've been having some issues with some beavers, so with this, what they do with the grant is they have, they hire an engineer, and they go out and they look at everything. So, they engineered up a set of plans to remove the beaver dam, we're gonna riprap that bank in right there to help with runoff of the water, then that, there's, there's ditches that are existing there, and we're gonna clean the ditches up, and we're gonna put some, uh, riprap check dams in going up through the, there, just to kinda, just to kinda tighten it up and make it look good for, right now, that's what they do. They go around looking for, um, um, certain projects that involve runoff and.
Design something to keep the beaver out?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, well, actually, while.
Says you're gonna do, I'm reading it.
While that's, another thing, while, to, to pull the beaver dam out, I have to get a permit from Inland Fisheries just to touch it, and, and I think they, they have this device now that you put on the front of the cul, I think, I don't know what it was, it's like a class I have to go to. And you put this device on the end of it, for like prone areas like this, it's supposed to like, measure the water table, like to close this thing, to make the water not run so much, the beaver doesn't hear it. I have to go to the class, I don't really know what it's, uh, like.
It's actually a sixty, forty, they're gonna cover sixty percent, so.
Good.
Right, so that, so what we do in that project, probably in September, cause you have to have it done before October eighteenth, or you're not eligible for the grant. So, um, we've kinda had to change up some things we're gonna do down there, just looking down the road, what things we could be doing with the road, so, um, we didn't wanna spend a pile of money on the hill, cause I might do something different down the road with the, if I widen the road or whatnot the case, so. Um, this is our best, best bet for right now. So, we'll be doing that project in, uh, September, but next week, there'll be a bunch of stuff you guys are gonna have to sign, to make sure you guys are all set with it. So, that'll be next week.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Thanks. Where are we here?
Website update.
Website update.
Website update. Daniel?
I was hoping you were gonna give the update.
No, it's what we're paying you to do.
So, website update. Unfortunately, it's not super great news. Um, we'll start with the good. Website is built, it's ready to go. I've switched from build to maintenance mode, meaning updates, calendar entries, announcements, all of that, I will start. Um, as you've seen, I've started sending out the newsletter, it's gonna start going out weekly, I'm gonna start, as Jennifer gets the email addresses, I'll add them to the list until we can get people to sign up on their own. The bad news is that we went to go live on or about the first of the month, we learned that the current, um, host we're using cannot get the domain name transferred for us. Basically, the, he can't change the address for us so that we can point to the new website provider. Uh, he contacted his people, they have a different email address on file, so he has to fight with them, so he can release that host name, ActonMaine.org, so that we can become owners as the town of Acton and do what we want with it. Essentially, point it to the new website provider. So.
I assume we own that domain name?
Um, I don't think we, the town of Acton, own the domain name at this point.
You don't think we did?
I don't think we do. I think the, the current, um, host owns it.
The current vendor owns it?
Either the current vendor owns it, or the company he contracted owns it, out of China.
And we're switching vendors?
Yes. Um, so we're gonna get to the point where our current web provider will either host it all for us, or the town of Acton will own the domain, and we can change it at will, if we have to go through this process in five, ten, fifteen more years.
But he just started working on this, so we need to give him a chance. I mean, but the town has known that, that they've been hosting the address for the last fifteen years.
Typically, the, you know, the town would own that name, but I can understand where they might not have done that back then.
The whole issue is compounded in that the, um, owner of our current company that we use is not in good health. Um, so, we're, we're working through it as best we can, I'm emailing him once, twice a week to see if we have any progress.
Hopefully, you can resolve it, as best if you can do it, I think. But, if this thing drags out, I would get council involved.
And, and, and in all fairness, I mean, I appreciate everything Dan said is accurate, but we just, just found this out yesterday, so we gotta give him a chance to.
That way, but.
There are other options. Um, if we can't get things to move in a reasonable amount of time, and what's reasonable, everyone has a different opinion. We could just drop the ActonMaine.org and go to ActonM E dot org, or something like that, and that's almost a couple of days versus however long this is gonna take, so.
Let's try the first one first.
Absolutely. I wanna keep ActonMaine.org as much as we can, so. That's my update. Other questions? Thank you.
Dan, I know I asked this the last time, but, um, are we getting a new email system?
The email provider will change, the goal is to transfer all of your existing emails to the new provider. You'll keep the same email address, we may have to change settings in whatever you're using to access your email.
Who, who's that provider?
At the moment, I believe it's our current website provider.
What does the school use?
Michael's here.
Mr. Corey, what does the school use for their email provider?
Email, we use Google Apps, Google Business.
And, did, did we look at that?
We did not, because the plan was to move all the emails to our new website provider.
Okay.
I don't know enough about this stuff to even ask questions, so.
What do we know about this?
I, I can look into it and see if it's something we can do or not.
I'll be honest with you, I, I always found the current email system cumbersome.
I find it outdated.
To be polite. Um, and so, if we're gonna move, um, I would hope we'd move to something that is a sort of standard in the industry, uh, either Microsoft, or Gmail, or is, something along those lines.
I will just remind you that we signed a contract with our new provider to host the email as well. So, if we want the change, that would need to be addressed.
Okay.
I mean, I'm happy to do the research.
Have you looked at this email service to understand how it works, and?
I think it's very similar to what we're using today, and, at the end of the day, it's how you use it. I mean, an email provider is an email provider is an email provider. How you use it, how you access it, makes all the difference in the world, and I'm, I'm happy to sit down with any one of you and see if we can improve that process for you.
It is more updated though.
I mean, for example, uh, when I wanna email somebody in town, I believe I have to know their email address. There's no name search that says, you know, Wayne Hammond pops up and.
That's the same for everyone, unless you have them in your address book, you have to know their email address.
Well.
Think of it like your home address. If you didn't know where someone lived, you looked them up in the White Pages ages ago to find out where they lived.
I, I know email services will have a global, any author, any authorized email address in ActonMaine.org, um, is in a directory, and all you put in is Wayne or Hammond.
So, you're, you're talking a local address book within the server, and absolutely, that can be done. That can probably be, be done today.
Okay, that would be helpful. Um.
So, I guess Jennifer and I have some work to do, because Jennifer has all the access to that.
Yeah.
I'm happy to sit down with Jennifer and see if we can make that happen as well.
Okay. Well, um, I, I, I would think there'd be some advantage to being on the same system as the school. This a little too late?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking, let's give it a shot, we signed the contract, let's see how it goes, we can always get out of it. I don't disagree with some of your saying, although, Michael will tell you that I'm not a huge, I don't wanna switch everything to Google, but you've got some valid points, but we did already sign, and we're in the middle of switching over, Tom.
Okay, fine.
There, there are a lot of options out there. So, if you decide six, eight months down the road, it's as simple as changing one line, once we own the, the host, not the host, then, once we own the DNS address. It's a matter of changing one line to point to a different email service, so.
I, I, I don't wanna belabor this, but I, I remember when I first got an email address, or attempted to get an email address, it was quite a project to get me access to email. And, uh, I don't know whether that was just some fluke with my home internet, or what was going on, but it took me weeks to get, what's matter?
Nothing, I just see.
I remember, oh, it did take you weeks. It took weeks to get it, and I've heard other people say the same thing, and so, given that we got people coming on and off committees and so on, there's just, you know, ongoing maintenance that needs to happen, you know.
My intention is to make it so easy, Tom, that you could do it. Make it so easy that you could do it without help.
That would be good. That's, that's the, it's gonna be.
If you ask any of my, uh, employees, or any of the customers I've worked with, my documentation is top-notch.
This was a reflection on you, Dan.
I, I'm not taking it that way.
This was a reflection.
I'm, I'm saying I can make it easy.
Okay, great, thank you.
Regardless of who we use. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
That was fun.
Okay.
Okay, we're doing a new business. Okay, now, we're getting the good stuff, yeah. New business. Article forty-three, request Langley Shores.
Okay, so, uh, the chair, Jay Ward, is here, um, I will pass down to you, I didn't make the entire application packet for you, cause it's identical. Um, the Road Association just changed out the scope of the work, and, um, so that's a copy of it there, and Jay is here to tell you about the Road Committee discussion about that updated project.
Great, thank you, good evening. Um, so, the committee met last Thursday on the twenty-seventh, went over the Langley Shores, um, resubmitted application for Article forty-three money. Um, and we found all the information to be accurate, and, um, met the constraints of Article forty-three, and, um, have approved, and would ask the select board to approve also.
I watched your meeting. That was not cool. Um, a lot of the stuff that was thrown on your meet was not correct. Um, and unfortunately, when the request that was put in by the person who put the request in, okay, said, they changed nothing on this, right? Is that correct?
Um, the scope of work has not changed.
Okay.
But the scope of work.
Now, during your meeting, okay, um, that, we were accused of, um, not approving this illegally and everything else, it was pretty humorous watching it. Um, because, and you didn't change any of this, okay? So, we refused it for what reason? Do you remember?
Uh, I do, I do.
What was that?
Um, that, that there was a confusion on the scope of work and whether it impacted.
There was no confusion on the work, okay? The problem was, was during your meeting, the chair that you, you, your, your old chair, okay, expressed that they were gonna take out somebody's private property, okay, in this project, okay? And they were gonna do this and that, send them a bill, blah, 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 blah. We rejected it on that premise, right?
Right.
During your meeting, you said that nothing's changed, right?
Um, the scope of work has not changed, correct. And it does not impact what you are saying, the original application did not.
I didn't hear anything during the meeting saying that they were not gonna, they were not gonna disturb that, um, that piece of property.
It's not in the scope of this.
It was in that scope of work when she presented it the first time.
Conversation, it was a conversation.
I don't, verbally, it's like taking minutes. We don't, we don't take minutes anymore, cause we have a, we have TV, okay? But because you didn't change it here, I wanna hear saying that will not be touched in this project, cause I don't want nothing to do with that.
We were told that, that that would not be touched.
Okay.
You willing to put that in the, in the packet of information? Sure.
We gotta make the amendment to that. We would make that amendment. That's what.
Well, can we just approve it with that stipulation, that that will not happen?
Yes.
That will, as an approval, can we just make it?
Weekend, yes.
With that contingency?
Yes.
That it will, cause this looks like you're simply raising the bed. Am I getting this right? And it's defined the scope of work between two, two points.
Correct.
So, it doesn't talk about anything about removing culverts?
Yeah.
This doesn't. This is simply raising the bed.
Agreed.
Right, okay.
Do you, do you know whether or not Langley Shores has received any funds for this section of the road already for that project, that's?
I am not aware. No, I do not know.
Because I, that's one thing we're gonna start doing from now on, when we do these Article forty-threes, is we, this is set up to do, to mitigate problems, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you and I have gotten in this argument many times over maintenance.
Not an argument.
Well, not an argument, but disagreements, okay?
Discussion.
Discussions, okay, over what maintenance is, and what maintenance isn't.
Mm-hmm.
We don't wanna be funding the same project over and over and over, because you know what that turns into?
Maintenance.
Maintenance, okay?
Right, and they're trying to mitigate the problem by changing the.
But I wanna make sure that we haven't already paid to have that project done already, right? That's, that's what, that's all I'm trying to get to here. So, do I hear a motion? To approve this?
I move to approve the Langley Shores, or Shishin work as presented, with the stipulation that they do not touch, uh, the culvert, um, what, who's, who's culvert?
Peterson.
Peterson's culvert.
Pearson.
Do you wanna make it that way, or just personal culverts?
A personal culvert.
Well, no, the thing is, is if somebody down the road wants, says it's fine, it's fine.
Okay.
I would be fine with them touching their culvert if they put it right, but, but we know there's already been legal issues, that's why we wanna stay away from this. So, um, so I hear a motion?
Seconded.
Ben seconded.
Oh, sorry. All in favor? Thank you.
David, just quick clarification, cause it's been so long since we've paid one out. In the past, didn't we have a road commissioner go down and look at it when it was all done before we released the funds? Or the Road Committee Chair, somebody went down after the projects were done. I'm trying to remember, didn't the road, didn't you used to go down there and look at them when the work was done?
We used to do them until the, um, application changed.
And then you stopped looking at them, okay. So, at what point are we authorized to release the funds, just so I know from our end?
Somebody really should be looking at it.
This, this is a situation where I think somebody should make sure that it wasn't tampered, I believe if it was tampered, we would get a phone call.
Well, are we looking at all of them? Cause I, we just, you're just. Because we just, you just approved one a couple of weeks back. We haven't released the funds from that one either. I just want to make sure I know what your procedure is.
We're releasing the funds to the association.
Correct.
And the, and the grant is really what it is from the town to the association has been made based on this motion that's been approved with the stipulation that the money be used in a particular way. And if the association does different than that, that's going to be an issue the association will deal with, with those property owners.
So once they're approved, we can just release the funds. We don't have to wait for the work to be done?
No, I think, I think this one here, I don't want to release the fund until the work's done. Because if they turn around and go do what we told them not to do, then how, we have no recourse at that point, so.
So a lot of grants that I've done in volunteer work, it's after the fact, the entity pays up in front and then afterwards, they say, give us their receipts and show us the work that you did for this project and then they get the funds, they reimburse. That's, so I don't see anything wrong with that.
That's how we have done it before.
So we want them to contact us when it's done.
I think that's how we usually do it.
It is.
Okay, is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
And it's, there going to be an inspection?
I think we could send our road liaison down there and make sure it was all done, huh?
Yep.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
True. I'll take the chairman of the road committee with me.
Chairman of the road committee?
There you go.
Mr. Long.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to just raise one thing. So if there's conversations that are happening in meetings, it doesn't necessarily mean that it is the will of the committee or, I mean, if they're just conversations. So it takes a little bit of offense to how you characterize.
Well, as, as being a chairman of a board and you being a chairman of a committee, it's your responsibility to shut down when somebody is making accusations, which was made. I think one accusation was Mr. Winchell, oh, no, I didn't say Mr. Winchell. One of the selectmen doesn't want to touch because that's his buddy's parents, okay? Do you remember those? I watched the meeting. There's accusations being thrown out there. I'm not looking out for my buddy's parents. What I'm looking for is for the town of Acton's tail. That's what I'm worried about.
How would you suggest that that be shut down? I mean, I, you can have conversation about anything and.
Jay, go back and watch the video and you tell me that wasn't something, a real piece of work.
You know, Jay, I think actually when it was brought forward to the selectman meeting, because I wasn't, I didn't look at that, I'd never seen that tape. It was pretty clear that they intended to do something.
No, he's, he's talking about a different meeting.
He's just about last.
He's not, he's not talking about the meeting that you're talking about.
No, but I'm saying when you brought forward that original Article forty-three or when it was brought forward.
I was not chair at that point.
No, but when it was brought forward, they clearly intended to do that culvert work because they talked about it. So I, granted, this is the same application, but it's been clarified that it's not going to include the culvert. Well, awarded, it's been awarded on that basis, that's fine. But I, I do think when that was originally brought forward, while the scope in discussions was larger than what was in the writing.
So I would suggest, though, that what you're talking about is the conversation that's had in committee or with the applicant. And there's, those are two different things.
I was only reacting to the discussion we had here at the select board.
Right, no.
Because I, I wasn't aware of that other stuff.
This conversation that was just raised was amongst the members of the committee.
So Jake, to adjust your, your question, like how to, so like when we watch those committees, we know it's like everyone's thoughts and ideas are coming out and we know it's not going to be. But as selectmen, when we watch those meetings, that's, that's what we get from like, if we're only hearing these things and you come to us, we're gonna think, okay, these things that were talked about in the meeting are behind this thing that comes to us. In regards to writing in, kind of just having kind of a finality when you have those discussions, you know, if there's discussions where things are said that are not true, part of writing the N is kind of as chair directing the conversation. I don't think this is what they want. We need to make sure that we address their concerns. Having that conversation with the members so that at the end of the meeting, you all have the same understanding that, okay, this is the scope. We know that this is what the select board wanted us to talk about. And so then as we're watching the meetings, we know, we can see, okay, they talked about it, but it seems that they all have a clear understanding. So just kind of like Mr. Winchell said about kind of just directing the committee and kind of that conversation, things got to hand, kind of just saying, hey, no, this is not what we're here to talk about. This is the scope of the work. Let's focus on what we can get the money, just having that conversation.
And I could appreciate that. I invite any of the selectmen to come to all the meetings.
I plan on being the next one there.
Great, that would be wonderful.
Because I mean, what I got out of that whole meeting was the town of Acton can get sued, okay? That, I don't know how many times that came up. If I was a lawyer, which I'm not, but we would lose in court, yeah, I don't act and we're losing court. That's where you as a chairman have got to say, wait a minute here, we're getting way out of scope here. And that's what you guys did. There was nothing in that part of the, no, you can shake your head, but I watched that.
I think you're wrong because it was not pertinent.
Do you believe any, at any time?
It was not pertinent to the vote that was happening on the merits of this.
Yes, it was. It was exactly, you were talking about that road and that application. When Mr. Long decided to go on a tangent about how we're liable, we're gonna get in trouble for this, we're gonna get in trouble for that, that's when it's your job to say, okay, this is outside the lines and you did not. But that's besides the point. It was the first night being chair, fine. But I'd like to see the road committee actually be productive. And what that meeting was not productive the other night. All that was, was crapping on us all night. I have some ideas. I have, now, you're gonna discuss anything tonight about, because we were supposed to be a meeting. Were we supposed to have a meeting with you?
Yeah.
At some point? We are, okay? And you wanted to discuss raising the amounts and, and the.
Potentially raising the amounts and.
This is the perfect time to do it.
Changing the application.
What would you like to change on the application?
I think make it a little bit easier for, for associations.
What can you make to do, make it easier?
I'm willing to sit down with anyone and discuss that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you in on something. The reason why the application is what it is is because that's what our lawyers told us it had to be. There was certain stipulations the state made us do to do that. That's why at the end of the day, when this was all pushed through, as, you know, we're gonna take care of all these camp roads, right? And we used the, we, I forget what the statute was, okay, I off the top of my head. But all these people were supposed to be able to get help. And that's what it was intended for. Everybody was supposed to get help. Come to find out, when you look through the statutes and everything, you have to be part of Great Pond as a lake study. There's all these requirements, okay? Well, what ended up happening was after those, after that all came to fruition, there was only a few roads that were able to get the money, right? Am I right? Yeah.
So the, the discussion was made by the selectmen to me to look at how we could increase utilization of the, so the place to start would be the application itself.
Yep.
The, the attorneys are looking at something that was presented to them and making their suggestions. If we could present something different, that looked different and acted different, maybe they would support it. I, I don't know. That's why we were supposed to be working together.
Article forty-three, is this something that's in place at other towns?
Yes.
Have we looked at their applications that, and especially in a town where they say it's been, they've been able to make it more applicable to a broader range of roads in a, in a particular way legally?
I don't, I do not know the answer to that.
Perhaps that would be something the road committee might want to do, is contact some towns that have Article forty-three, look at their application, talk to them and say, what's the difference here? Why are we being so constrained here in Acton by our application? And perhaps is there some revisions that could be made that would allow it to be expended in a broader way?
Yeah, because right now, it's not being used like it was presented. It was presented that there was a hundred some private roads in town that were going to be able to get monies, this and that, and we've got five. And the same five over and over and over. I've got, I've got an idea. I'd like to present at some point that I think that we could honestly get rid of Article forty-three and put more money out there to everybody by using, going through the lake associations. Because every time I hear somebody come up say, well, we need this money. I think last time was, we need more money, we need to save these lakes. Well, working on your two roads, those two roads up there is only helping this little problem. Where I like to see all of Great East Lake, at least on the main side, worked on. And I think there's a way to do it.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah, I got a way to do it.
The whole purpose of this is to try and make sure that the lake is protected.
I would like to get the town of Acton out of this, you know, private road, whether or not you're taking care of a private road or not. We, we give, donate money every year to Great East Lake Association, all the lake associations around here, right? We're worried about the lake, right? We're already donating to these people. Why don't we bring the lake associations and say, hey, you know what? You come to us with a amount of money, okay, that you think you need for all these projects in the area, and we're gonna delegate it to you, okay, and let you guys, so that means you don't have to worry about working on just the road. You can work on some doyad if it's, if it's an actual issue with the, you know, environmental issue. Okay, right now, it's not working. And I don't, I don't believe even, very small amount of people in the town of Acton benefit from this. And it's really not right. We, we have to broaden this out to the point where more people benefit.
Let me just say that again, it's to protect the lake, so it's not people that we're necessarily trying to satisfy. So those applications that have come in that have been supported have done some good work to, to protect the lake.
It's just that it's too narrow in terms of the scope of roads that are included. And there are many other roads that are not included that are creating issues in the lake and we ought to be able to spread this money further. And maybe increase it, to be honest with you.
Some of those roads don't have road associations. So by broadening it, we give, I'm just gonna pick a number, ten thousand dollars to the Great East Lake Association. They can then divvy that money wherever they wish to put it without us being involved.
Be more broad. And honestly, at the end of the day, Article forty-three was put through for one reason. It was, it was a way to, okay, we're gonna take care of our private roads. Everybody bought it, ran with it, and then come to find out, oh, no, we can't do that because this, this, and this. So you got five roads.
So it just needs to be refined.
It needs to be refined, but I think.
It's a good concept that we're trying to support.
A different process, yeah.
There's other ways.
Just to clarify, are you asking that we come and meet with you? Are you asking that we present something to you or that you're going to tell us what we're doing?
Well, there were two approaches here. One, one I suggested, if it's working better in other towns, let's find out why and whether or not we can adopt that. David is suggesting a totally different approach. Let's work through the lake associations, grant money to them, and they in turn can grant money for projects and roads on their lakes.
I completely understand what he's saying.
That has real merit.
And I think the only thing.
I completely, I, I said that would be wonderful to do.
I know you did.
I'm just asking how you want us to do it.
I mean, that would be something they bring back to the committee and ask them what they think. I mean, kind of talk it over and talk about these options. And you could have some of you folks looking at the first option and then some looking at the second option and kind of seeing that. And then meeting with the select board when you have kind of those two plans, saying this would be plan one if we went this route, this would be plan two if we go this route and kind of see what would work best. I mean, that could be a.
So I'm asking all of you, is, is that what you agree with or? I don't want to come in here next time and say.
It's a great question. It's a great, if I were doing it, I'd get the lake associations together. And say, and get them together and say, gee, we had this idea. What do you think about this?
Okay.
They may have a totally different take on it, say, gee, I don't want to be in that business. I think they would, quite frankly, because I think it would create greater connection between the lake association and the town government. And I think that would benefit everyone.
Again, who?
I, I know, I know.
Is it going to be you or is it going to be?
I don't know. We'll have to think about it.
Okay, so.
And I, I encourage you to do the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a thought on it, but I'd just like to say, not all of these roads are on lakes. There are many that aren't, and they have to be looked at also. If we looked at Article, if we looked at Class B roads and the radius curves, obviously, and the elevations are too much and 109 could not even qualify for that. Article forty-three got changed by a period of time over the select, with the selectmen talking to different lawyers. But we can easily change the, our own road ordinance and take care of them ourselves. But we should talk about it and come to an agreement.
What about the road ordinance? What would you like to change on the road ordinance?
On the road ordinance itself, I would change the elevations and the radius curves. Though on Class B, they're too hard. These roads were, I mean, we have hills and, and curves. This was written for Kansas, not Acton.
I've been saying for a long time, now, I, and I think I probably even told you this. I've been telling everybody that I can tell, okay, when they talk about their camp roads, I can take care of it. Do you know what we can do? We could amend our road ordinance.
Right.
And, and, and we, and we might actually agree on something here, right?
I would love that, David.
But I've been saying right along is when our road ordinance was created, it was created for one thing, right? It was created to build a new road, okay? Building a new road is a lot different than trying to convert an old road into a new road. That just, it's like you got a new old farmhouse and turn it into a brand, it just don't work, okay? So I've been saying right along that if we amended, made an amendment to our road ordinance stating that anything built between, you know, from like, say, I always use nineteen seventy-six because I, I use culvert, culvert as an example. Anything built before nineteen seventy-six runs at a different standard, okay? And I've been on deaf ears. Nobody listens to me.
No, I totally, I totally agree with you.
You know, because what happened was when the road ordinance was adopted, okay, everybody assumed that you had to build your road, an old camp road, up to a brand-new town road, which you can't do because of the great elevations, your, your easements and everything. You just never can. You just can't do it.
That's right.
And you're like you said, 109, H Road, all these roads, none of these roads would meet our road ordinance. But our road ordinance was only put in place for one thing. So when they go to subdivision, they have something to go by, okay? And, and something to approve.
So David, we need to.
This is something where the road committee can actually start working on this. That, that's our job.
You have to consider public safety here. On our roads in the winter, we have old people and poor people. And when something happens last winter, particularly on, on our road, two seventy-five-year-old men had to cut the road out because we couldn't get cars out. And, and this is what you have on those roads. So we would be, I know as a road committee, very happy to work on this with you, David.
The, in the issue with your, your road getting in there with, you know, people having to cut, I'm sure the fire department would have been on that, you know, they're.
Oh, they, they would, but if you have to get out fast, you have to get out fast. At the end of our road is a pregnant, was a pregnant woman.
I want to assure everybody in the town of Acton, if there is an issue where somebody can get in, we will approve that being done. And we've done that before.
Oh, I know, I, I know there, I know that. But they need to, they need to. Well, we'll talk about it. I think that's a good start.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh. Forgot I'm running the show here and I'm right off left field here. Okay, where are we now? We did Article forty-three. We are on executive session. Yeah, why don't we do a public comment before we go to the executive session? Is that a good idea? Dan, you good with that? Okay, well, public comment? No public comment? Okay.
Do you want to do appointments too and then we'll come back all week? No, we can't. You're right.
We gotta go in.
You're right. Yep.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move we go into executive session four, five, six, A1, personal matter.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay.
Make a motion. We come out of executive session four, five, six, A1 at seven forty-five.
Second? All in favor? Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Why, thank you. There you go. Okay. Appointments for the rec committee. Typically, we read the whole thing, so.
You really don't have to. You've never had to.
But I was looking forward to it.
Huh?
Okay, rec committee. We have, what do we have? Five?
Yeah.
Okay, Kayla Blakely, Blakeney, Ian Heller, Jennifer Dom, TJ Dom, Anne Sonner, Sonia. All for the rec committee. Given under this day, the second of August, two thousand twenty-three. They expire six thirty of twenty-four.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. We got a couple pending, so we'll be, uh, interviewing those people probably sometime next week, I hope. Okay. Uh, where are we here? We got the appointments done, very done, public comment. Dan, you want to do the announcements tonight?
I'm sure. Um, announcements, August third, planning board meeting at six PM. August eighth is May Grant Committee meeting at the Preserve at six PM. August ninth, this is select for meeting at six PM. August sixteenth is a select board meeting at six PM. August seventeenth is a planning board meeting at six PM. August twenty-third, select board meeting, six PM, and August thirtieth, a select board meeting at six PM.
Okay. Uh, we'll finish signing these up here. Do we hear a motion? Do it, John.
I'm the two chair.
Seconded.
All in favor? Come ahead, everybody.